All right, thank you for your patience. Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. Can we start with the roll call, please? Oh, wait, no. Sorry. Let's start by thanking our folks in the back, Susan Miyamoto. And let's see, is it Aaliyah? Thank you for your music this evening. That was wonderful, even though I wasn't here, I'm sorry. I'll watch the video and we'll appreciate that. Good. Our invocation this evening is to be provided by our city manager, Mr. Aaron Adams. And Mr. Comacher, could you provide our flag salute for us?
Certainly.
Dear only Father, Lord, we just give you thanks for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to serve this great city. We thank you for the residents of our community. We pray for their safety and their wellness. But we just also ask for discernment and wisdom over this city council, the city staff, the protection of all of our first responders, and just continue to guide us as leaders moving the city forward. And we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please remain standing. Let's face the flag and place your hand over your heart, and let's honor America with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now may we have the roll call, please.
Here. Councilmember Comacher.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards. Councilmembers Nagar and Stewart are absent. Mayor Ron.
I am here. All right, do we have any public comment this evening?
We do not.
Oh, all right. Well, then I will dispense with the reading of the rules. City Council reports, do we have anything on the, from our members? All right, well, I just have a couple of quick things. I believe there's a slide back there, hopefully. Yeah, there it is. Join us Saturday, October 27th, 9:00 to 1:00. We'll be at the Help Center on Pujol Street. It is Temecula Community Cleanup Day. So wonderful opportunity for all you young folks in the audience to get your hands dirty and help make your city clean. It's a great event. It falls under that whole Temecula Safe and all the wonderful things that we do for Temecula, so I hope to see you there this weekend. The other thing that I wanted to mention as well, the City of Temecula was nominated by the City of Marietta, actually, for an organizational excellence award from the Municipal Management Association of Southern California in recognition of the public agency or the City of Temecula's contribution to the advancement of local government service. So just wanted to kind of share that with folks because the reason we were nominated and the reason we received this sort of, actually, very prestigious award for our local government was for leadership the City of Temecula has shown on several items. The first being our homeless task force and the work that we've done on that regard. The second is for the transportation task force and the Move i-15 program that we started this year. And the third is Mr. Adams', oh, the cancer task force, correct. And so the city's shown remarkable leadership, apparently, in those three areas. And, you know, we've had some really good successes with the growth of cancer support services in the city, some very recent and very positive success on movement of improving traffic and transportation on i-15, and some really good news on the success of our homeless outreach teams this last few months as well. So really nice to be recognized by our neighboring city and by the association for Southern California, so good news all around. All right. Thank you, Marietta. Okay, so consent calendar. We have several items here. I'll read this. All matters listed under consent are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items to be removed from consent for separate action. Item number one, waive reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Two, approve the action minutes of October 9, 2018. Three, approve list of demands. Four, approve the city treasurer's report as of August 31, 2018. Five, approve the Second Amendment to the Service Agreement with Webb Municipal Finance LLC for special tax consulting services. Six, approve meeting schedule for city council meetings for the month of December 2018. Seven, adopt the 2017 City of Temecula Local Hazard Mitigation Plan Annex to the Riverside County Operational Area Multi-Jurisdictional Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. Okay. That one sounds exciting. I might pull that for discussion, I don't know.
Yeah.
So item number eight, approve the fee structure for fishing permits at Harveston Lake. Number nine, approve an agreement with Altech Industries, Inc., and appropriate vehicle and equipment funds for the purchase of a 2019 Ford F-550 Public Works bucket truck. And then last, approve the First Amendment to the Right of Entry Agreement with Western Riverside County Regional Conservation Authority on city-owned properties within Temecula Creek.
Move the consent calendar.
And second, with a clarification, Mr. City Attorney, I serve on RCA, and is there any issue with that?
No.
Thank you. So I second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your vote. All right, and that passes 3-0 with Mr. Nagar and Mr. Stewart absent. We'll go ahead and recess the city council meeting to the Temecula's Community Services meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Madam Clerk. Same people are still here. So we'll dispense with the roll. Do we have any public comment? Okay. We have three items under the consent calendar. Item 11, approve the action minutes of October 9, 2018. Item 12, approve the Second Amendment to the agreement with Webb Municipal Finance LLC for special tax consulting services. And item 13, authorize the quitclaim of landscape and retaining while maintenance easement deed located at 31906 Calle Alanita, fronting on La Serena Way.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. That motion carries 3-0 with two absent. And Mr. Hawkins, what do you got for us tonight?
Well, Mr. President, tricks and treats for the entire community this weekend, beginning with the annual Halloween carnival, Friday evening from 5:30 to 8:30 p.m. at the Ronald Reagan Sports Park. This family-friendly event includes priority access for our special needs guests, carnival games, arts and crafts, and playables, train rides, costume contests, food vendors, and the new first responders trunk-or-treat area. Also, a quick reminder of a permitted event this Saturday out front here in the Civic Quad in Town Square Park. It's the SoCal Divas of Blues Festival, which should provide plenty of good music and entertainment. And finally, don't miss the Fall Spooktacular, this Sunday, October 28, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Temecula Amphitheater. Come on out and enjoy a free concert presented by the Temecula Valley U Symphony. The program includes Halloween music from Harry Potter, the Addams Family, and Ghostbusters, along with the costume parade and prizes. So lots of safe fun for the entire family here in Temecula. And that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Kevin. Mr. Adams, the joint manager, report.
Nothing further, Mr. President.
Any directed reports? Seeing none, we want to take a motion to adjourn to the next regularly scheduled meeting of November 13.
Move adjournment.
Second.
Motion and a second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.
All right. Well, flying through this agenda this evening, we are going to move on to the public hearing items and reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting. Public hearing, any person may submit written comments to the city council before a public hearing or may appear and be heard in support or opposition to the approval of the projects at the time of hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city clerk at or prior to the public hearing. Item number 14 is approve Assembly Bill 1600 Financial Reports Development Impact Fee Expenditures. Can we have a staff report, please?
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. The item before you tonight is a summary of the development impact fee expenditures for fiscal years 1718. Government Code Section 66006 requires an accounting of the development impact fees be provided at a public hearing every five years. The city has a practice of providing this report annually in order to provide for maximum transparency. Per the government code, development impact fee revenue must be spent within five years of receipt on eligible capital projects that mitigate the impacts of the development activity. For fiscal years 1718, a total of 2.7 million in DIF revenue was collected across the eight separate DIF accounts listed here. A total of 65,000 of interest earning, of interest was earned, and a total of 2.8 million was expended. The remaining DIF balance, fund balance for all eight accounts totals $3.9 million and is fully programmed for the expenditure in accordance with the 2019-23 Capital Improvement Program adopted by the city council on June 12, 2018. That concludes my report, and I'm available if you have any questions.
All right, any questions?
Nope.
All right. We will go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers?
Mr. Mayor, we do not. You're welcome to close the public hearing.
All right, go ahead and, bang, we're done with that. So I think, do we need a motion and a second on this, please?
Yes, move item 14.
Second.
All right. Please cast your votes. And that also passes 3-0 with Mr. Nagar and Stewart absent. All right, moving on to city council business. Item number 15, consider and provide direction regarding Adopt a Park Community Beautification Program at the request of me. Can we please have a staff report on that?
We're moving through here. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks for your efforts to bring such a program forward. Community Services Supervisor 2, Mike Wooton, has coordinated with Public Works and Park Maintenance, Park Rangers, and community stakeholders on this effort, and will be making tonight's presentation. So, Mike?
Thank you, Kevin. Can you hear me? Okay. Don't know how I get this on the screen. Can I get a little help to get this on the screen? There we go, okay, perfect. Good evening, Mayor Ron, and members of the council. My name is Mike Wooton, Community Services Supervisor, and I'll be providing a brief presentation on the new Adopt a Park program. At the request of the mayor, community services and public works staff explored options for implementing an Adopt a Park program. This program will allow individuals or groups to adopt a specific site in a volunteer capacity for the purpose of enhancing the beautification of city parks, trails, and green space. Many similar programs throughout the state, including the Adopt a Highway program, were researched to determine which aspects were appropriate to incorporate into the city's program. While it is being entitled Adopt a Park, this will actually be a broad program that makes most any open space in the city available for adoption. This includes both passive and sports parks, trails, and green spaces such as creek or lake sections. In addition to the enhancement and beautification of our parks and open spaces, staff believes that the Adopt a Park program will lead to greater public education and awareness of parks, recreation programs, and community services, and community or corporate support of park-related capital improvement projects. So staff identified different levels or tiers of projects and services that would be available to potential adopters. These tiers are, one, custodial projects, which includes trash pickup, graffiti and gum removal, and minor maintenance. Two, beautification projects. This tier may involve painting of facilities, landscape planning, and amenity donation such as benches, trashcans, bike racks, dog waste receptacles, and more. So the first two tiers are ideal for passive parks, trails, and open spaces. The third tier is meant specifically for sports parks and special use sites, sites such as the dog park, where volunteer opportunities may be more limited or challenging due to scheduled events or high traffic volume. This tier focuses more on amenity donation, including but not limited to wind screens for ball fields, brick dust for ball fields, dog park items, and various sport supplies. Capital improvement projects may also be available with this tier, and of course, all projects and services are subject to approval by the Public Works Department. As mentioned on the previous slide, adopters can select tiers for the services they want to provide. While the specific tiers are more of a guideline, adopters will have an opportunity to take on multiple levels of service or even request additional types of activities not listed pending staff approval, which will mean even greater enhancement and beautification of the site. So this slide, this slides provides a list of general activities that are eligible during adoption. Activities such as reporting of suspicious or illegal activity and litter removal will be standard for all tiers. The benefits of adopting a park to the public and city are numerous. It will allow groups or individuals to participate in the beautification and upkeep of the parks in their community, cultivate community spirit, foster civic responsibility, and provide a venue for community service projects. Additional benefits include an increased awareness and involvement by the community and also park safety. Adopting groups will be recognized with the placement of a sign at the adopted location and public acknowledgement on the city's website. The Adopt a Park packet will contain all of the information that the public will need in order to inquire and apply for adoption, as detailed on the screen. Once the application has been approved, a separate agreement, along with both youth and adult waiver forms, will be sent to the adopter. Staff will then meet with the adopter to discuss cleanup and maintenance priorities and also provide general guidance and necessary training as needed. Going forward, staff will begin promoting the Adopt a Park program through TCSD's monthly series Around and About Temecula and on social media sites. A copy of the packet and a description of the program will also be available on the city's website. Community services and public works staff will also continue to work together to establish training protocols and determine the types of assistance the city can provide. So that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time. Thank you.
I do.
All right, thank you, Ms. Edwards.
So, thank you. Do we have in mind the types of groups or organizations that might want to do this? Are we thinking, of course, maybe people who belong or live in the community, obviously, you're in the HOA or the tract?
Correct. So while it can be open to anybody, obviously, that doesn't present a conflict to the city. Ideally, you know, groups, Kiwanis, Friends of Har-
Boy Scouts.
Boy Scouts, that's a big group that we expect to hopefully be interested. Different HOAs, the Friends of Harveston Lake Fishing, that's another group that we think might have some interest, and actually has expressed some interest. So multiple groups, it's pretty, pretty open on who would be available to do-
High school service clubs, as long as they have an advisor.
Absolutely. JR, JROTC, things like that, correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any others? All right, do we have any public comment this evening? None, really? Okay, this is so exciting. Come on.
It is.
Okay, so I have a handful of things. You know, part of the, the idea of doing this, and in my mind, was both, you know, the enhancement, beautification, and community involvement in our parks programs. But, but the other part is a little bit more challenging, and that is dealing with some of the issues our city faces, whether it's, you know, graffiti, or gang and drug use, or even homelessness. And so my experiences down in San Diego, what, what brought me to this was, City of San Diego years ago, they had a tremendous issue in a lot of the canyons. So San Diego is kind of built on mesas and canyons, right? And a lot of the canyons in these neighborhoods started having, in the early 2000s, tremendous issues with gang and drug activity, homeless encampments, and a lot of crime surrounding these beautiful canyons that were in the middle of a lot of neighborhoods. And so the city had adopted a program for, kind of a Adopt a Canyon program, right? And a lot of the emphasis was on removing invasive species and restoring habitat, but also getting the community more involved in those, those locations because, you know, for, for a lot of people whose backyards or neighborhoods abutted these areas, it was, it was a place that nobody entered. It was a place that people were fearful of. And so it really brought the community into the canyons, gave them, you know, ownership in a lot of respects. And so you had a lot of people, you saw all of a sudden using the hiking trails down there and picking up the litter and, you know, holding community events and little picnics down there in certain times of the year. And so it was a great way to change what was a problem in the community into, you know, real asset for, for neighborhoods. And so I was thinking about some of the issues that we're facing here as we sort of wrap up our year of Temecula Safe. And, you know, one of the things I recognize is that we have, have issues in our creeks and in our parks and, and, you know, along some of our open space and trail areas with graffiti and, and, you know, folks hanging out in the parks using drugs and, you know, issues that, you know, don't dominate our culture or, you know, environment here in the city at all, but it's, it's something that, you know, why wait till it becomes a problem? Let's do something about it now. And so, you know, my mind said, basically, let's, let's create these Adopt a Park-type programs to get people more engaged in their own backyard and their own community and see what we can do. But the other thing that, that I think I'd like to see as part of this program is, is to see if we can include an Adopt a Creek and Adopt a Trail as part of that. You know, and specifically, I'm thinking of Marietta and Temecula Creeks because, you know, I could see folks like the Sierra Clubs and others, you know, getting involved. I know I've had some really great conversations with folks who work for the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation here in town. And, you know, they've had deep interest in wanting to get involved in sort of watershed level issues with us as well. And so what I'd like us to do is maybe expand this program slightly beyond just the parks and include, you know, trails, some of our open space areas that aren't really in our park, you know, portfolio, and then perhaps identify, you know, Marietta, Temecula Creek, and then some of the contributing sort of tributaries, you know, in town as well. Now, I recognize that this is going to require some agreements with Riverside County Flood and others because it's technically not our jurisdiction, but I would love to be able to see more eyes down there, you know, and more people involved. You know, the value of what, what happened, Mission Trails Park was a great example of this in, in San Diego. Now, that's, you know, a 7,000 acre park, mind you. It's a little bit different issue than we have here. But, you know, we, we had at one point created what we called the Cell Phone Patrol. And so there were signs along the trails and things that was a number that you could call that gave you direct access to Public Works and city code enforcement and that sort of thing, so that the folks who were out there enjoying the trails, enjoying the amenities, if there was something going on that, you know, shouldn't be, or they had a concern about something that they saw, or, you know, if a swing is broken or something, they could basically just, you know, contact us. We've got the wonderful City App that, you know, we could use to plug into this and just to report those issues. And especially if, you know, groups like our high school students or others want to, you know, with their clubs or Sierra Clubs or whomever, adopt these parks and trails and so forth, you know, there's a little bit of active, I think, responsibility for that. And so with, you know, my colleagues' approval and staff's consensus on this as well, I'd like to see us sort of expand the program just slightly beyond this and see if we can't, you know, create more of a community-wide initiative. Jeff?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, gonna have an Adopt a Mayor program? No, I, I think it's great, and certainly I support it. The only issue I think that's potentially hanging out there that I can think of is as we go through and have essentially untrained people, I know we'll give them some orientation and train them where we can, but going out there, if they encounter homeless, and we know some of the homeless don't really want to be encountered, or if they find some kind of illicit behavior, whatever, and they're not trained on how to deal with that, we could be putting them in harm's way. So I think we have to be very careful here to know particularly what the amenity is that a particular group is adopting. And if it doesn't seem appropriate, maybe steer them to, to something else. I think that you kind of have to marry those helping with the amenities that they're actually helping with, but I think it's a wonderful idea. I have no problem expanding it. I don't even think it needs boundaries. I think, you know, certainly creeks and trails could be virtually anything we have. Could be senior center, could be, you know, City Hall or portions thereof. Could be anything, so why not?
Mr. Mayor, I agree, and certainly there will be a degree of training necessary, especially where hazardous material is concerned, because we know our homeless people deal with needles and things like that, so we have to make sure that people are, you know, well-informed about what to touch and what not to touch, so, but I think it's a great idea.
Great. All right. Move approval. Mr. Adams?
We can absolutely go back, and I think our, our first course of action is to, you know, get, get Riverside County Flood Control to provide sort of a approval to, to, to our program. And I, I think if, within the confines of what we're asking, it shouldn't be too difficult, and we can add that or sections of trail or properties that they own, the waterways, and, and bring that back to the city council. Secondly, it would be my recommendation that, you know, you know, we're, we're doing a pretty darn good job with the homeless outreach team, and these are gun-carrying police officers that are trained to investigate encampments. So I, I don't think this program necessarily would be focused on, on encampments, per se. I don't, I don't think we would steer that from, from that. We'd leave that to our law enforcement officials and, and certainly not want to put a civilian in, in harm's way. So the cleanup and the beautification and clearly steering them towards these amenities, I think, is what the program will try to outline in detail. So we can absolutely pursue what you mentioned and come back when ready.
Yeah, and, and don't get me wrong, I didn't want everybody just running out there trying to take on this responsibility themselves. You know, it, it more or less for, for San Diego when they, when they went through this process, I mean, code enforcement, law enforcement, you know, fire departments, they all had a big hand in first making these areas accessible, right? And then after that, once the areas were cleaned up, then, you know, the, the community could adopt the area and, you know, and they were able to hike the trails to be in the area, and, and they just provided those, you know, additional eyes on the ground because, you know, as issues come up and whether it's, you know, illicit activity in our parks or, you know, graffiti starts to crop up in an area, it just, you know, provided an extra set of, of eyes and ears and, and boots on the ground for us to be able to, you know, keep Temecula safe. So I wholeheartedly agree. I don't think we need to have everybody running out there, you know, doing our job for us. I, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, our, our neighborhoods, our communities, we all take a little bit more ownership because, you know, over the last year, we've had a great dialogue with, you know, folks around the city as we've talked and really focused on public safety as an issue for this year. And, and, you know, a large part of that conversation was dominated by some of these issues. And it's funny because every time I talk to a resident and somebody calls up or emails us and they say, "Well, there's this homeless encampment down here," you know, two things happen. One is, you know, we always ask them, you know, "Well, why haven't you ever contacted us? I mean, we've got an app, code enforcement's here, police department is here." The minute you call us, you know, it was remarkable because, you know, when we would see these issues occur in the city, response was, was astounding. In fact, there was a gentleman who came out to the, you know, coffee with the mayor a few weeks ago and mentioned, you know, graffiti at the end of his, his block in the cul-de-sac there near one of our parks. And that very Monday, you know, our crews were out there and cleaned up the issue. So, you know, so part of it is just, you know, obviously, we want more folks out there getting engaged, but the other part is, you know, I think it really helps our residents know that, you know, when you do call us, we do something, and it's, and it's a pretty rapid response. And so, you know, don't be shy when you see something occurring in your community that you don't think, you know, should be, because we definitely want to hear from you because, you know, unfortunately, our law enforcement officers and code enforcement folks, they can't be everywhere all the time. And so it really does take a community to keep Temecula safe. Mr. Comacher?
In light of the, the same issue, I think maybe we can go a long way in how we word the, the guidelines in the program, that reporting is to be encouraged, enforcement is not.
Right.
And I think we have to be specific in saying, we do, we do not expect nor do we ask for any enforcement by these volunteers. But you see something, say something, you know, certainly that'll be a help.
We love the idea of involving the community and getting more eyes on, on these areas.
Everything.
That, that is helpful and a deterrent.
You know, I think the ownership piece really is huge because people do have a lot of pride in our city, and it just gives them a chance to express their appreciation and to help us take care of it.
With that, I'll move the item.
And I'll second.
All right, let's go ahead and cast our votes, please. Oh my gosh, not surprisingly, it passes 3 to 0. All right, how's the squeaker?
Close, I was worried.
All right, let's see. Seeing other reports, let's, let's start with Mr. Sullivan, Traffic Safety.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council members. Our next meeting will be in these chambers, 6 o'clock on Thursday, and we'll be reviewing some applications from Temecu HOA on stop signs. So public is welcome to attend.
Mr. Yeomanz?
Yes. Good evening. At our last meeting, we approved a nice project in Old Town. At our last meeting, we approved a, a nice project in Old Town on a project that had some issues that will convert to a nice hotel, and I think it'll be real benefit to Old Town.
All right. Wonderful. And, Mr. Schwenk, what do you have for us tonight?
Good evening, Mayor Ron and council members. Brief slide, again. I know I love my slides. So, last week, we had the High Hopes Halloween Party. This is a staple for our commission. We truly enjoy judging this competition. This High Hopes is for our special needs adults. It's, provides a, a fun, social atmosphere to just really have a good night in, in the city. If you've never been, I highly encourage you to go. It is a great evening. It's a lot of fun.
Really good.
Yeah, it is fun. And then tomorrow night, our commission will be hopping in the TCSD mystery machine, and we will be driving around the city, looking at all the homes that have decorated, much like we do for the, the Christmas season. So, this'll be fun. I'll report out on the winners next meeting. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. We've got law enforcement at the dais this evening. Good evening. Do you have a report for us?
You, Mr. Mayor and council members. I just have some stats, follow-up stats for September. We had a total of 7,489 calls for police service, 71 for Priority One calls, with an average response time of 6 minutes and 43 seconds. We had a total of 36 arrests for DUI, 19 injury collisions, and a total citation tally of 2,021.
Wow. All right. Keeping us safe. Thank you for that. All right. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Just, just one item. We, the City of Temecula lost a dear friend on Sunday. Her name was Jeannie Ward, and she was 97 years old. And there are two chairs in the city council chambers on the left side, one of which has her name on it and one of which has her husband's name on it. And they were fixtures in those chairs for probably nearly two decades, coming to every council meeting. They weren't gadflies, they weren't activists, they were here because they loved the City of Temecula, and ironically, they did not even live in the City of Temecula. They wanted to be annexed into the City of Temecula. Sweet, sweet lady, Jeannie Ward. I put this quote up there. "City of Temecula" is my favorite, and I know that Elton would agree. We're just sad, but we're, we're happy for her. She's been reunited with her husband and late son, so we're thinking of Jeannie this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Mr. City Attorney?
I have nothing tonight.
All right. Mr. Comatero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, a word about Jeannie. I always knew that when we looked out there, and even in the old city hall, we looked out and saw Jeannie and her husband, Elton, every meeting, and we knew that everything was right with the world. And it was just, they were two magnificent people, and we all loved them, and certainly will miss Jeannie as we've missed Elton all these years.
They were like family.
We also lost another non-city resident on Sunday morning, Bob Wolf, who was actually a resident of the City of Riverside. But Bob was a champion for just about everything Riverside County, including our city. In terms of transportation projects, for a number of years, he was chairman of the California Transportation Commission. He was a member of then-Governor Pete Wilson's cabinet for a number of years, and just a wonderful individual. I just always loved to talk to him because he was so into what he was talking about, and yet, nonjudgmental and very level-headed, and so, we'll miss him too. So, I'd like to adjourn tonight in memory of both of those lovely people.
All right. Motion, do we have a second for adjournment?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We will see you next time.